Bring this lesson. So that we can have this reported. Alright, so we we talked about the coughs being the nineteenth of being near the end of the alphabet. We also talked about this letter here not being the vase but being a. And this NICU utilizes the letter valve. Or some people might say the wow. And with the dot right here, this dot, this letter is actually called the shook. Yes ma'am, the shook and the shook makes an oo sound like a double O like in good or food. It makes a oo sound. So we have. K O O cool. Yes ma'am, cool. And then we have the mem, right? The mem and this thing under the mem is called the kamats. There's no quiz over the name of it, so don't worry about trying to memorize names, but the kamats. Makes a. Sound like in father. And this is of course hey. Right, but this is attached to the end of this uh the mem. It is very interesting that when you're reading Hebrew, you have to just transliterate or. The 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 right word is decode, you have to decode. Sorry, I have a one year old that thinks he runs out. You have to decode the information. So i- this is giving you a lot of information and you just have to read the letters and read the NICU to sound out the information. And I stress, it is not important to know what you're reading. It's more important to know how to read it. What, understanding the definition of the words or what the words mean, that comes later. But just being being able to read it. Gets you over a certain huh, okay? So, we have kuma yahua.
Yahwa.
Yes ma'am, so we have.
Yahwa.
And this is all, this is one of the, this is a sight word, it's the name of God, right? And it's one of the few instances that I know of. Where the valve, which is this one right here, the valve actually makes the W sound. And that's why I don't call it a wow, I call it a valve, because generally when you see the valve, it's gonna make a V sound. Or it's gonna be a vowel making an O or oo sound. It hardly ever makes the W sound, so I don't know why we call it a wow. Another word, another word that utilizes the valve as a wow is. This for here, Hawa, which would be the name of Eve. Without the U, this is Hawa, and that's Eve's name. So I'm not mistaken. Let's see. Let's look at it real quick, so we know I'm not lying. Genesis one. Alright, and then we're gonna go to Genesis chapter two. Because that's where we find Eve. Let me zoom out of this real quick, there we go, makes it look a little better, so the Genesis chapter two. And he says, uh, I will call her name Eve. And come on. Okay, so let's turn into chapter three. Where did he name her Eve? Okay, let's try like this, Eve, we'll search up the name Eve. Genesis three twenty, okay. So we look at three twenty. And it says, Adam caught his wife's name Eve, look at that. Hawa, so Eve has the 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 HES in front of it. But but this is one of the few. This is one of the few uh words that I know where the valve makes the W sound, Hawa. So it's not hey valve hey, it's HES valve hey. So I was a little wrong, I was kinda right. Now here's where, here's where we have to pay attention to the syllables, okay? Here are the syllables. This V is a valve, of course, with a shiva underneath it, and this means and, A and D. And, and then we have there, ya. Because this is you'd make the Y sound, and then this kamats is telling you that this you. Sometimes you can be used as a vowel, sometimes you can be a consonant. And whenever the you'd appears with something underneath it, it's telling you that it's a consonant. Now we know this is Fuso because um. I hate when that thing highlights and it drops a little dot on the box. So this is pay, but this is the FAY, very of of pay. If it was the pay, it would have a little dot like this in the middle of the right. So this is something that is the F sound, FAY, as in pharmacy, or as in uh Persia. You know, the reason why, the reason why Persia is called, the reason why the language they speak is called Farsi. Is because in the Hebrew, when they spell Persia, they spell it with the FAY and not the pay. So the Hebrews did not call the Persians with a P, they called them Farsin. Farsin.
Farsin.
And that's where the word, uh, that's where, that's where you get the name of the language, the name of the language is called Farsi. Yes ma'am, and so the the Hebrews did not, the Hebrews did not uh. Call them Persians with a P, they call them Farsin. So watch this, this is the first, let's go to Daniel chapter six, verse twenty eight. And we're gonna look at this word, Persia. Alright, and here we go, Persia, look at this. Here's the word Persia, notice there's no dot in the pay. Let's go down to the last one here, and look, we have here, Farsia. Farsi. And this is where the word comes from, that's where you get the language from, Farsi. Uh, we have here, we have there. And I want you to pay attention here, because here you have two NICUs. You have the kaboots under the FAY. And you have the shooter uh next to the Sadi. And they both make the oo sound. You have the kaboots, the kaboots is that diagonal three dots under that FAY. And then you have the Sadi is like this little Y looking thing, and next we have the shooter. And the shooter is the same as this shooter right here. And both of these make the oo sound. Now, the question is, why do they have two different things to make the same sound? And that's the question for somebody who knows more Hebrew than I do, okay? I have no idea why they had to come up with two different sounds. Different ways of making the same sound. But back to the syllables, we have, we have here, there, ya, fu. They are Fuso. Now here we have O, remember the aleph is silent. The aleph is silent, but this here, this dot at the top is called a holam. And sometimes the holam will appear on a valve, it'll be called a holam valve. But right here is a holam by itself, and whenever you see a holam, it makes an O sound. Whenever you see a holam, it makes an O sound. We know this is there because if this was the bed. If this was bed, it would have a dot in the mouth of the bed. So we have O E there, events with the segal. There, there, and then this is the, this is the symbol that everybody. This is the 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 sound everybody forgets to say when they doing the uh raising of the yard. And this is E, O E there E. And it is not a valve, it is a consonant. So we have, a- and we we talked about this before in a previous lesson about the structure of Hebrew. When you're when you're writing it, it has to be consonant, vowel, consonant, you would never have two vowels together. You might have two consonants together, but you would never have two vowels together. And whenever you have two consonants together, uh or back to back, you'll be separated by a syllable break. So watch this, we have aleph is a consonant, holam is a vowel. You is a consonant, shiva is a vowel, bait is a consonant. Shaggle is a vowel. Here we have you again as a consonant, and then you have the syllable break. Then you have half Sophie as a consonant and kamats as the vowel. There has to be a syllable break here, you'll never, in Hebrew, you will never see two syllables. I mean, you would never see two vowels together. Always separated by consonants. And whenever two consonants are shoulder to shoulder, they're separated by a syllable break. So we have to, we have to stay true to that understanding by saying O. You have a question? Yes ma'am.
You, but what you pronouncing the E song where you have the Yoda. And the uh. And then you say the same E song but the Y alone. Why you say instead of you, I would the Y, like O Y, and then. By the other Yoda. After the fair, you say E, what what? Without any. There is no, I will know what to say E, or is it just probably for this word?
That is a very good question, a- and 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 the answer is is this. When we look at the translation or the transliteration of you. You is the tenth letter of the Hebrew alphabet. Let's let's count the alphabet real quick, aleph, bait, gimel, dalit, hay. You is the tenth letter of the Hebrew alphabet. Now, the letter I is also the tenth letter of the English alphabet. Okay, and at one time, there was no letter J. And this is like Hebrew count, American Hebrew counts, uh one on one, right? There is no letter J in Hebrew. And so, at one time, the letter I had a consonant and a vowel form. It was both a consonant and a vowel, like the letter Y, the letter Y is a consonant and a vowel. And we actually had more letters that were both consonants and vowel in Old English. And we've removed those from use, that's why when you get a King James sixteen eleven. You'll see sometimes the V or the N serves as a vowel in some letters, in some words. Okay, so, you have to understand that the letter I and the letter J. Were the same letter at one time with the same sound, and they separated them by putting a little hook on the J. And that's why the letter J comes after the letter I in the alphabet. And those two letters also represent the you in Hebrew. So in English, those that that sound is separated into two letters, but in Hebrew it is not. So the U can make an E sound or a Y sound.
You, why, okay, okay.
It can make a E sound or a or a Y sound. Think about when you say uh a letter, think about every word you say in English with a Y. How does it, how do you pronounce the Y?
Well, depends on where it is in the word, if it's big enough or whether it's a song you. Enough a word like in baby, it was on E, whatever would I fly, it's a song I at the end of a word.
Okay, so so I would, I would stress, I would stress that when you look at the word, I'm using your example, right? You have they be right E, and then when you have fly, fly.
It's songs that are I in English, fly.
What about the word, what about the word, yes? You could stress that too, right? But i- it's more of like an EI or a. I Y, it's it's not, it's not true, see, we we say Y, with a, I mean, we start with a W. But i- it it really shouldn't have a, there's no W sound in the in the letter Y. It's really like an E or I sound. And 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 that distinction is, that distinction is very apparent in. In Hebrew, because right, you have a word like Yodaya. Yodaya is you, aleph, dalit. I in, right, Yodaya, Yodaya, so O E there Eka. It is, the I and the Y are kinda interchangeable in that sense. That is, that is the best, nothing, that's the best explanation I can give you for it. Is is it has to do with the way we transliterate the U and the J and I. And going from uh our dramatic English to um. Back into like a Afro-Asianic language, um it is just, it it can get very confusing. And then also, when we know the rule for the shiva, and how I told you. That sometimes the shiva, because people had a hard time pronouncing the letters or the words in Hebrew. They would put this little small superscript E sound for the shiva. Yeah, so we have O E Vega. A- and 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 you go to Israel, you you talk to a Samahia or somebody who's more fluent in Hebrew than I am. And they might give you a different understanding, but a- a- all I can. All I can give you is the information that's presented in front of me. If the, if if there's, if there's a little nuanced differentiation that I'm not getting, then you just gotta chalk it up to my. Uh inexperience with Hebrew, but as we're, as we're reading it, you know, we always. We 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 always miss this syllable here. And and so, I I I give you the, I give you the rule of Hebrew, because every language has rules, I give you the rule. And as we learn more, sometimes those rules are broken, sometimes those rules are bent, sometimes those rules. Are no longer uh valid in the language, right? Because as languages grow, some things go extinct. And some things are still in the practice, so there's a, there's a, there's a, there's a lot that can be said about that. And I hope, I hope I, I hope I hit around a bush enough to, to give you some kind of clarity on that. Okay, so let's try it again, we're gonna go from here, kuma yahua. Remember, this is here, there is the, is and, and. There, ya Fuso. Now, I I also wanna show you that this here, this ka is a pronominal suffix. Pronominal suffix, and I'm gonna write that word out so you can see with that what I'm saying. Because I know sometimes it it pays to. Pronominal suffix, and I just put Hebrew. So a pronominal suffix in Hebrew, pronominal suffixes are possessive. And objective pronouns that are suffixes on nouns. So when you're looking at this word here, this is a noun, right? This is enemies, right? But this is telling you, whose, remember it's possessive, whose enemies are these, and these are your enemies. So when you see this ka, you know that this ka means your. Let's look at it right here. I wanna see a clearer version of it, oh geez Louise. Let's go to this website, see if we can get a clearer version of it. So whenever you see a word ends with the shit you, like this one here. Shit at the bottom, you at the top, you know, this is me or my, possessive. Whenever it ends with the ka, you know, this is your. So, and this here is your feminine. This here is his, with the holam valve, is his, or also this one here. Um, third person feminine, her, right? Let's see if it goes any further, oh, look at this here, the the new. With the shooter at the end, right, Eloheinu, our. Baitehnu, our house. Alright, and then you have the other ones here, right, third person plural, masculine and feminine, and then this is you all and they all, right? And and there, I I say you all, so that you know it's plural, it's not, it's you, it's you all and not just you. So it's you all and they all, plural, so these endings tell you a lot about. Who is, whose enemies they are. And it tells you how many enemies he has, because it has Fuso, meaning more than one. Your enemies, multiple plural enemies. Alright? Let your enemies be scattered, they are Fuso O E Vega, and then we have the same thing here, right? Look at this, and, just like we have and here, and there, ya. New, new soon, right, like Fuso, but we have new soon. Same rules, the noon with the kaboots, the samech with the shooter, they are new soon. And remember, you gotta say all the syllables, me, san. Now, me is a pronominal prefix. Now, if a pronominal suffix is a possessive that goes. After the word, like a suffix does in English, a pronominal prefix comes before the word, okay? So here is the root word. Right, and this is, you can drop off the uh, I think you drop off one of these and just make this a cast. Right, here's the root word, no, I'm sorry, that's online, here's the root word, drop off the um. I'm not sure which one, but here's a word, san, right? Me is a determiner or prenominal prefix, and then you have the your, right? Your right there, well, same as the your right here. And so this is me, san, and when we follow the rule for the shiva, whenever the shiva. I'm sorry, before we do the rule for the shiva. We have to know that me is. A pronominal prefix in order to apply the rule for the shiva, let me explain that one time. Here we have a shiva as well, but this prenominal prefix is the literal word and. So none of the rules for the shiva apply to this shiva. Because this shiva is not part of the root word. Now, same is true of this shiva. The the rule for the shiva is this, whenever the shiva appears at the beginning of a word, it means to blend. The first two letters together. That does not apply to this shiva, because this shiva is part of a prenominal prefix, me. So, the second rule for the shiva is, whenever the shiva appears under the second letter of a word. It is indicating a syllable break. So we skip over the first shiva, and we go to the second shiva. Because this is actually the first shiva of the root word. Let me explain that one more time. The rule, we have two rules for shiva. The first rule says, whenever the shiva appears at the beginning of a word, it's telling you to blend. Uh the words together, like in the word Shmaya. Alright, Shmaya, you have the sheen, you have the shiva under the sheen. Then you have the mem, and then you have the I in Shmaya. And it's, and that, that sh- the shiva is telling you to blend the first two letters together. The second rule for the shiva is, whenever the shiva appears under the second letter of a word. It's just indicating a syllabic break, a break in the syllable. So, even though this might look like one word with our English. You know, Babylonian English understanding of language. When you know Hebrew, you understand that this is not one word, this is a group of words. And so, knowing that, you know that this mem with the shiva. Is changing the state of the root word. The root word has a state, right, is in a state of transition, or is called a construct state. And that root word has a state, and this mem changes the state of that word. And this ha also changes the state of the root word. That being said, we ignore this, we don't apply the rule of the shiva to this, we apply the rule of the shiva to here. So, the rule number two for the shiva is, whenever the shiva appears. Under the second letter of a word, it is indicating a syllabic break. So you can literally break the syllable in it like that. You can literally break the syllable right here, break the word in half right here, so when we're trying to sound this out, you would have. You would have me. And then we go back to consonant, vowel consonant, right? So, kuma yahua. Ve'ya fusu, oiveika. Ve'ya nu su. Mi san eika. There you go. This is all one syllable, mi san eika. Mi san eika. And then mi paneika. Now, look at this, look, look, look at the difference now. This mem has the shiva underneath it. Indicating that this is a pronomial prefix, but this mem has a shidduch underneath it. Indicating that this is. Hmm, this is a, a root word, right? Panin, panin, right? Is my face, right? Or the face of you, your face, right? The face of you. And we know that's the face of you because that ka goes back to this ka right here. Right? Goes back to that ka right there. Mi paneika. Ve'ya nu su, mi san eika, mi paneika. Now, you'll hear Hebrews in the kingdom and everywhere else, you'll hear them just. Blast past this whole, blast past this whole scripture. And those, those different sounds will get muddled in the pronunciation of it. And that's easy because they just talk really fast. Or because they are going off of the memorization of the verse and not actually knowing how to read it. So, uh, you'll see them saying. That's fine. They've memorized it, cause they've heard it in the kingdom for twenty years. And they've never seen it written down, or they've never tried to break it down. But i- if I were to read it during a, a Sabbath class, I would say all the syllables. Um, kuma yahua. Ve'ya fusu oiveika. Ve'ya nu su, mi san eika, mi paneika. Kuma yahua, ve'ya fusu oiveika. Ve'ya nu su, mi san eika, mi paneika. Uh, uh, one of my friends is a, an Indian, and a, like an actual Native American Indian. And he was, uh, we were talking because my great, my great grandmother is, was, was a Blackfoot Indian. And, um, he is a Blackfoot Indian, right? Uh, which is a, a subtribe like the Cherokee, and I was doing the raising of the ark. And he thought I was speaking in Blackfoot. And I, I, I didn't know why he was saying that, because at the time I was, I wasn't a student of Hebrew. But in, in, you know, hindsight being twenty twenty, now when I read this in Hebrew. It, it does sound like you would think a Native American would sound, right? So when lava say that the Indians were black, or the Indians were African, or Hebrew, or Moorish, uh, it makes a lot more sense. Kuma yahua, ve'ya fusu oiveika, ve'ya nu su, mi san eika, mi paneika. And we go over this every, every class, because, um, the more we practice it, the better you are when get at it. Um, I just wanna make that clear, um. Does anybody have any questions over any of this?
Nope.
We spent a lot of time on it, because I want you to get it, and I want you to have an understanding of what you're seeing. It doesn't do you any good to not have an understanding of what you're seeing, cause it's, it's, it's hard to read Hebrew if you're doing that. But, uh, if, if nobody has any questions, I wanna go over this really quickly. This will help us with the understanding of the niku, alright? Uh, we're gonna be talking about aleph and bakes. And, uh, I can make this PowerPoint available in the group. And I also put this video recording on the chat, so you guys can go onto my YouTube channel and, and look at the, uh. I also put a lot of different readings on my YouTube channel, Bible verses. Cause my first reason for learning Hebrew was to be able to read the scriptures on my own, and I have to rely on somebody's interpretation. So, um, you'll see some videos on my YouTube channel. It, when, if you go onto the chat and click on my video, you just click on my channel page and go to my channel. And there's a lot of different readings of different Hebrew scriptures. And I'm going to be doing some more readings from scriptures, um, this year. You know, I, I try to do it with the school year, because I'm a school teacher. And it just makes it more structured, if I do it semester and yearly based on that. So anyway. I'm gonna go through this PowerPoint, and I wrote, I made this for a, a class a long time ago. So you don't have to worry about the cash app or anything, but this is my actual company. Um, I act, I'm actual, so, um. In the first lesson, when I introduced myself, what I told the class was, my name is Jokanon, I'm a school teacher with H I S D. Um, I am a state certified multilingual instructor. My job is to take students from other places in the world that don't speak English. And, and give them the tools they need to be successful in the English language proficiency test at the end of the year. I also am a resource for teachers who have students from other places. To help them with their curriculum, to get their curriculum to where they can, uh, help their, or accommodate their. English language learners. So English language is not something I do, I mean, language is not something I do for fun. Actually do it as a. And my wife was born and raised in Kenya, and my home is a multilingual home. So you'll hear my wife fussing sometimes in the background in Swahili. Okay? Cause we're learning Swahili and Arabic and Hebrew and Spanish in my house. So, this is why you see all these, look, the Selakim Multilingual Literacy Center. And all this other stuff, alright? Let's go through this real quick. Um, this exercise works best if you follow along. Your ear must hear, this is important here, your ear must hear what your mouth is saying. Cause that's how you correct your errors, is by your ears hearing what your mouth is saying. Um, we're gonna skip through this, we're gonna learn some niku and everything else. This is a PowerPoint for a different course, okay? So just, uh. We're gonna, so here we go. This is kinda how you'll see it, um. Let me move this, uh, toolbar here. Alright, um, aleph is a consonant in Hebrews, also used as a vowel. Uh, aleph should always default to its native sound, uh, and its native sound is ah. So whenever you see the aleph, you can always assume that it's gonna make an ah sound. And I, I tell my students this, this rule can be easily broken, but. The only way you know what aleph makes is if there is niku. If you are like me, and you're not a native Hebrew speaker, you can't really read Hebrew without the niku. I have trouble reading the Hebrew without the niku. Because then I don't know what sound, what, what vowel sound goes with the letters. Question. Do you know how to pronounce the words without the vowels? The answer is, you don't. It takes, uh, simply, right? It, it, it takes experience with the language in order to know what sound to make, the vowel sound to make. Um, and, and he, in, in, in Israel. I'm sorry for the noise, y'all. In Israel. Uh, students learn with the niku until third grade. Everything is with the niku in third, up until third grade. In fourth grade, they start to try to wean you off of the niku. And in fifth grade, if you're still using the niku by fifth grade, then they start recommending you for special classes, okay? So, everything uses the niku until third grade. Why? Because you have to get familiar with the letters and the words, and then you start to memorize. Or you start to kinda fall into the patterns of the language, and then the context. Gives you the pronunciation. So until we can build context, um, we always use the niku. And that is why I have this rule, the aleph always makes the ah sound. Alright, examples, aleph with no niku. Aleph with no niku makes the ah sound as in father. That's gonna be his native sound. Now, aleph with the kamats. Aleph with kamats, that's this thing underneath here, makes the ah sound as in father. Everybody could say the ah sound.
What you call the kamats, is that you could use kamats and patak interchangeably?
Yes ma'am, you can. Now, so you would have to ask somebody who is well, better versed in Hebrew than I am, why? But I will tell you this. When. When the people who created the niku. Um, even the Mazerites, when the Hebrews came out, let, let's talk about two situations. When Darius of Persia. Back in the days of the Book of Daniel, when he sent the Hebrews and allowed them to go back to Jerusalem to build a second temple. And then the second instance is nineteen forty-seven, the Balfour Declaration. All these Hebrews are going from, all these European Jews are coming in from Switzerland and Germany and Russia and. A, B, C, D, E, F, G country, going to Israel. In both of these situations, these people were coming into Israel, and none of them spoke Hebrew. And they all were speaking different languages of Persia, because Persia was an empire. It was not just. One race of people, it was all the other nations that Persia had, had conquered. And they spoke multi, you guys are all seeing three hundred, right? It was multinational nation, a multinational empire. So the Hebrews being scattered in Persia, they all spoke different languages. And when the Israelis came into Jerusalem in forty-seven, they all spoke different languages. So, in order for them to learn Hebrew in both of those instances. The Mazerites in the Persian days and Ben-Gurion in nineteen forty-seven. They had to implement a, a system to help people learn how to speak Hebrew. So they were all speaking different languages. So, the niku system is, is a fruit of that tree. Alright? And, and so, the differences between the kamats. Which is this one here, and the patak, which is this one right here. The differences between them, at one time were very significant. And were necessary for people speaking different languages. But as, as Hebrew became modernized and became more in use and. Everybody forgot, started forgetting Yiddish, and they started, they stopped speaking German, they stopped speaking Polish and Czech. And everybody was speaking Hebrew, those differences started to become very soft and, and, and miniscule. That's why when we do the, uh, re, the raising of the ark, and you have ve'ya fusu. With the khaboos and the shidduch, they both make the same sound. At one point in, in history of the niku, those two dot critical marks needed to be there. Because people didn't know how to pronounce those words. So, we're, we're, we're living in a time now where some of those differences are getting less and less distinguishable. So, the patak and the kamats, here's the kamats, it looks like a T. And the patak is like a little line, they both make the ah sound. Ah as in father, same as kamats. Alright? Now, this one here is called setting. Setting. And, uh, this is gonna be that Y looking, uh, letter. From ve'ya fusu with that little siding, um, it makes a TS sound, and I talk about this a lot. Um, if you will, just make the TS sound your mouth. Right? Yeah, it's, it's like a, it's, it's like a Z, but it's a soft Z. And, and then your tip of your tongue doesn't vibrate. When you say. And your, your, your tongue vibrates on your teeth, right? When you say setting. Your tongue kinda just lets the air slide out. So it's like a Z sound, but it's a very soft Z. Aleph with setting, and aleph with setting makes an A sound, like in ve or ve. And, an- another thing I stress is, I can only read the information, so when I see the word cane. Kane, like, let me say yes, or affirmative cane, it is calf, setting, and noon so feet. So, we, we could say, uh, you know, something else, oh, it, it sounds something different. Well, according to the information that I've given, it is cane, right? Like ve or bay, hey, cane. But, uh, I, I, I'd say, I'd just have to say that you guys have to say it my way, cause Sarah might say it something different. But as far as the, with the setting goes, I have to say truth to the translation. Uh, so I say cane, and maybe I'm from Texas and I'm country, but that's why, that's how we say it out here. Setting makes the A sound, as in bay or bay. Next, we have segel, aleph with segel, and segel makes the eh sound. As in egg or leg, eh. As in egg or leg. Alright, aleph with shidduch, shidduch, and that shidduch is a little dot underneath there. Aleph with shidduch makes an E sound, like a double E sound, as in sweets. There you go, E. Now, aleph with shidduch, you, right? Shidduch, you'd. Makes the E sound as well. Now, why is there a shidduch and then there's also a shidduch? The reason why there is a shidduch is because Hebrew has one rule that it never breaks. And that is the consonant vowel consonant rule. And so because that rule is the only rule in Hebrew that is never broken. Um, they, they sometimes have to throw, uh, uh, sh, sh, you. Behind the shidduch to say truth to that rule, consonant vowel consonant. But there's the shidduch and the shidduch both make the E sound. There's a shidduch, and here's a shidduch, they both make the E sound. E as in sweet, the double E. Aleph with vav. Aleph with vav makes the O sound as in boats. And there's another form of it, is aleph with holam vav. Holam is the dot, vav is the vav, holam vav is the dot with the vav, alright? Holam vav also makes the O sound, there is no distinguishing between the holam, between the vav and the holam vav. It is the same thing, oh. Sometimes you have the holam. Let me see, if I have it on here. I don't. Sometimes you have a holam by itself. As in, raising of the ark, oiveika, I remember there was a dot was over the aleph, oiveika. So, it makes the O sound. Aleph with khaboos makes the oo sound as in food. O as in food, yes ma'am. Aleph with shidduch makes the oo sound as well, as in food, oo as in food. Now, these here, aleph with a combination niku. The reason for this shiva on the kamats is to just. Get the person who's reading to stop. Get the person who's reading to stop, take a breath and then go forward, okay? That's all it means. So all it does is this makes the I sound, same as kamats. Don't let it fool you, don't let it scare you, it's the same thing as kamats, just ignore the shiva. Same with this one, it makes it S sound as an egg or leg, ignore the shiva, just say the segel. Alright, then, then it, it goes through the same thing again. I wanna get to the, the next part here. It goes to the same thing again. Alright, so we have ah. What is that one? A, that's right, A. What is this one? Let, let's, let's try it again. That's right, E. That's right, oo. Now, I want you to notice that we have three sounds that are like E sounds, right? We have A, eh, and A, E and eh, right? A, E and eh. A, E and eh. Alright, you just keep that in mind, there's three E sounds, A, E and eh.
A, E and eh.
Yes ma'am, A, A, E, O, U, A, eh. That's all it is, A, eh. A, 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 E, O, U, A, eh. Yes ma'am.
You said three songs sung in E?
Yeah, so there's three sounds that kind of have an E in them, right? You have the A.
Ah, eh, that's, you say that a song is E as well, ah, eh?
Yeah, so, so the, uh.
That's the E Y.
Yeah, like they.
Not a A Y.
Um, so i- if, if A Y helps you say it the correct way, then absolutely A Y. But think about the word they, right? T H E Y. Right? They, and, and that's how I would usually, that's how I would usually write. Uh, the setting. If I was transliterating something from Hebrew into English. And I had a setting, I would write E Y and not A Y. Why? I, I, I'm, I mean, that's how I learned it and that's, um. Yeah, that's how I learned it, I guess.
Just, so just always choose E Y over A Y.
Yeah, well, a- and then think about it like this, when you, when you spell the word setting, you don't spell it T S A R A. You spell it T S E R E, so.
But if you're saying the word like Kane, would it, would it be using that A sound and using that double?
So I would say Kane as, as K, K E Y N, yeah, Kane. Some people say Khan, I don't, I don't, I don't know where they got the, the pronunciation ah in that because. To me, if it was Khan, it would be, uh, kamats or, or patak. But, you know, so that, that's why I say all I can do is read the information. Now, i- i- if Sarah Samakiya, she could probably, she's, she's probably forgotten more Hebrew than I know. So if she says it's Khan or she wants her to say Ken or some other way of saying, uh, well, if her pronunciation for anything. Is different than what I'm telling you, then I defer to her expertise.
I think the, I think the idea that the Neku is called the Siri clarifies it.
Yeah, and the patak is spelled with two As and the setting is so with two E's, so I just know.
Yeah, yeah, I, I get that's what, okay.
Alright, but that's a good, hey, that's a good question and, and sometimes those things need to be challenged. I mean, I agree. We need to get an understanding of that.
In Slika, uh, uh, on the, the one with the, the olive with the.
Talking about this one here?
No, not that one, um. The one right before that one, I believe it was. Can you put them all up again, let's see? The one with the, that you pronounced with the O, what did you say? This one right here, the last one.
Yes, this one would be, uh, uh, holam vav. Yeah, that's lots of it, one second, let's see, right, yeah.
Yes, oh, okay. Now, uh, so the, uh, the, the, the gesh above it, uh, the holam. Because that didn't have the holam, um, above it, but that's what it's indicating.
Yes ma'am.
Okay, it don't have to be there, you just know that it's, you know, that's.
Right, so there, there's three ways of showing this, right? The first way is gonna be like this. Where there, where there's no Neku, you know, this is a, a O sound, right? Second way is with the holam vav, you know, that's the O sound. Sometimes there won't be a vav and the holam would be over the, the letter, over a different letter. So if the holam is over a different letter, you know, it's the, oh, uh, and that's where we got, I mean, um. Let's see, I'm going to escape and I'm gonna go back to this here, look right here. Um, this word here. O E vague, see that? We have the holam without the vav.
Yes, so I understand that one because being at the, um, olive is silent, so we just go with the. Well, you, you said it wasn't really silent, but yes.
Alright, alright, a- a- and, you know, somebody else might say it's silent, but when you're reading this without, without Neku. You really don't know what kind of sound it makes, so always starts with I sound. Alright, but, but no, that's a good, that's a good question because sometimes that vav and that holam, it gets kind of confusing. And we don't know what sound to give it. But, uh, you see it like this, or if you see it like that, you know it's an O sound.
It's an O sound, okay, okay, I have it, told her.
I'm gonna power through this real quick. Alright, I do, always do it twice. Alright, Bates, we're almost finished, guys, uh. Bates, Bates native sound is the buh, right? With the dagesh in the middle, it's always a buh sound. Right, but, but remember that the B makes two sounds, B and the V, so the native sound, the original sound is always the B. Um, B as in butter. And then you have the va, va and va. Alright, being with Neku, yes? So this here is, I'm, I'm with my, but this is here, Bates with no Neku, Bates with Neku. Bates with no Neku. Default to the buh sound. So sometimes you're reading Hebrew and if it has no Neku at all. You won't know if it's a bait or ve unless you know the word. If you don't know Hebrew and you see there is some reading with no Neku. You don't know whether to say the B or the V. The only way you know to say the B or the V is. Some recognizing the word or knowing the word beforehand, and like I said. In, in Israel, they worked with the Neku for up until third grade, fourth grade. Because it's hard to understand what the word is if you don't know if it's a B or a V, so. It requires memorization and acquisition recognition to know when to pronounce the bait as vates. If there is no Neku. Right, you have more like bivakasha. Bivakasha is bait, bait. I mean, how do you know if it's babakasha or vavakasha or vabakasha or bivakasha, right? You don't know.
That part.
Yeah, you don't know, you just gotta, you just gotta know what the word is. Alright, that's why we do sight words. Some of our sight words will be, uh, will help you recognize, things that we say all the time. Will help you recognize when to use the bait or the vate, alright? Fortunately for us, the good news is. When I'm teaching the class, I always use the Neku. And like I tell you all the time, whenever you're reading something in Hebrew, you can't decide. I'm gonna use half of the Neku and am I gonna, am I gonna use over half? I got a thing against the setting and the segol. So I'm gonna write every Neku but those two. If you use any Neku, you gotta use all of them comprehensively. You'll never find a text that uses half of the Neku half of the time. They either use it comprehensively or they don't use it at all. So I always defer to using the Neku. Because that way I don't have to guess. So the bait with the Neku is B as in butter or buh as in butter. Bates with kamats is what? Exactly, buh. Buh as in bad. Alright, and there is a little nuance between the buh and the bad, right? Bad is more, you, you kind of, see, so in, in, in linguistics. We talk about the structure of your obit, your omature, right? Which is your mouth and how your mouth forms sound. So if you, if you will, when you say buh, you drop your jaw, everybody say buh. And you, you, you notice how your jaw kind of drops. If you say bah as in bats, notice how the corners of your mouth kind of pull up to make that ass sound. Nuance between buh and bad, but. Is that enough for us, uh, you know, make a whole course over buh and bad? Not really, right? So buhs and bats. Um, and that, that, that's like, we, we call it a fat A sound versus a long A. Long A is buh. When you drop your jaw, fat A is bad, when you pour your mouth apart, bad, right? But that's. That was me trying to cater to somebody who, you know, was really trying to. Get a, a PhD in Hebrew and he was still eating cornflakes, you know, like, you're not ready for that, so don't worry about that, okay? Bates with patak is buh as in bother. Alright, same thing, buh, bad, don't let that confuse you, okay? It's just bad, it's B A, bad, okay? Bad, buh, there's really no difference in the sounds. The discrepancy is very slight nowadays and nobody's gonna quiz you over, was that a fat A or a long A or? Did you drop your jaw enough or did you pour your cheeks back? There's no quiz over that, okay? Alright, and that's the long A versus the fat A, okay? Um, then we have Bates with setting, which is bay as in Bates. Notice it's B A Y, not B E Y, but like I say, that's all just preference, not. You know, it's not Torah, it's just preference, okay? It's just preference, Bates, like going to the house, Bates, alright? Bates with shidik is what? B, you had the long E sound, B, B as in beats. And yeah, and then Bates with shidik yud makes the same sound, B as in beats. Alright, um, Bates with segel. Bates with segel makes the eh as in bed, bed. And it knows that bed and the word segel is same E sound eh eh. Right, look at, look at, look at shidik, right? Shee rick beats, shee rick beats, shee rick. So that, that E sound in shirik tells you that the shirik makes E sound. Somebody in Hebrew thought enough of us to make these letters, make these sounds sound like the sound they made. These are sounds, sounds like the sound they made and as, as, as simple. As that might sound, it actually makes a whole lot of sense, right? These sounds make the sound that they make. Bates with segel makes the bear sound as in bed. Uh, bait with vav, we know is bow as in boat. Holam vav is bow as in boat. Bates with the boots is what? Bates with shuduk, oo, shoe, ruk, shoe, ruk, right? Look at that, cool boots, cool boots and shoe boots, they both make the oo sound, oo as in boots. Alright, then we go through one more time, let's just blow, blow past that. Alright, and then we're gonna go to the, um, here we go, what is that? They, yeah, they. Oh, oh, I'm sorry, you're right, you're right, I'm, I'm sorry, you're right. Buah, and then we have ve, cause there's no, there's no dagesh in there. Hey, y'all gotta keep me honest, cause I do this so much that I kind of, I look right past that. So this is buh as a B and this is ve as in a V, right? And then we have V, keep me honest. Bow as in boat, right? What is this? There's no dagesh, there's no dot, so it's vu. So we have, let's go through it, we have da. Yeah, V E, V. Right, don't, 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 don't let this rod trick you, this rod is a mean thing, ignore it. And then we have. Skip the shiva, go right to the segel, segel makes the S sound, bad. And then it goes through the same thing again, let's skip through that, alright? And that is the end of that one. It goes in, like, it, it talks about going into part two. Where we go over Gimel and Dalit. If you, if you all want to go through all the letters, uh, a little bit at a time. We can, or I can just find the, the PowerPoint and put them on the, uh, group chat, you can go through on your own. Uh, I think I have about half of them. I got tired of making the video, cause it was very hard and long to. It's like fifty-four slides, you know? Yeah, it's like, uh, let me see, keep me honest. It's, it's about, oh, look at that, seventy-one slides. And they have, and, and it's like animation and stuff in them too, so it was a lot of work to try to keep it together. Um, so I did about ten or eleven of them, uh, then I stopped. Alright? But I can, I can find them and I can put them up there for you guys, if you wanna look through them yourself. But I can, I can find them and I can put them up there for you guys, you wanna look through them yourself. Uh, right, yes, what's the, what's the question?
So, you know, I see why, um. People would read Hebrew with just the I sound. It makes it so much simpler. Like, take the word le heat rail. You just say la ha ta ra ah. You you see what I'm saying? E- even though that makes no sense, but. It makes it, because if you don't have the niku. It's just, all you have to do is learn the consonant sounds. And then you just put an I with it. And I, my apologies, I I I lay down at the the five fifty. And six thirty roll right on by me, so I missed the first party class, but I hope everybody is doing well.
That's okay, we didn't start till like seven fifteen.
Oh, okay, hallelujah.
Um, to 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 respond to what you were saying, um, this, this website here is called pealim.com. Pealim, you can write it down, P E A L I M dot com. And pealim just means verbs, plural, verbs in Hebrew. So I'm gonna write a verb in here, and I'm gonna show you some of them. Let's go with this one here, coret. Alright, coret is a verb. It means to read, right? Now look at this. What you're gonna notice in 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 this, uh. In this website is. Right, part of speech verb, so this is a verb, so in Hebrew, there are seven verbs in Hebrew. Hebrew verb families, let's go like, let's go like that, Hebrew verb families. There are seven verb families, right? Here they go. The, in the traditional reckoning, there are seven banyanin, right, verb families, banyanin, known as. Or call, right, the nifah, the PL, the puah, the hefah, the hufah. Now watch this. In the paah verb family, all of, let's look at the paah verbs, all paah verbs. Have the I sounds, alright? Here is coret, coret is a paah verb, so the root. Is kara. Alright? Let's go to another paah verb, let's go with, um. Say again? Katav, okay, let's go with katav. Alright, uh-oh. Katav, katav is PL. Right, so it's not, this is not in the 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 paah family, right? So, this will, this will be t, t, k t, right? So, what I'm saying is, because the the roots. Is, because the fam, the verb family is paah, all of the, all of the verbs in paah family have the double A sound.
Gotcha.
They all have double A sound. List of, let's see, let's even pull it up, list of all roots. Let's see if we can pull it up. See, look at this, paah, paah, alright? So in the paah family, all verbs have. Let's see if it'll help me out, let's go somewhere. Where we can see. Um, I'm just, I'm, we're, we're, we're in freestyle mode right now, guys, so just bear with me. Um, a comprehensive guide to Hebrew verbs. I'm gonna skip that, let's go to, uh, the only place I know where that, where they teach Hebrew is University of Houston, Austin, University of Texas in Austin. Alright, um. Okay, I don't, I'm not gonna find what I need, but what what I wanna show, what I was trying to show you was, um, let's go with a. I'm not, it's it's in the night, guys, so I'm kinda, that's why, uh, ochum. Where's ochum? Ochum is. Sorry. Oh, where's my, I wanna see ochum. Alright, t, bah, so when you have any paah verbs. They all have like the As in between here, so this will be ah, ah. Maybe we can do it here. Let's try it. Let's try it, let's see if it'll give me the root. Alright, so we're looking for, we're looking for the word read here, um. Okay, here we go. Watch this. Uh, to read, alright. To read is coret, but look at the root, kara, see that, kara. And anytime you have a paah verb, this is a paah verb, it's in a paah family. Anytime you have a paah verb, it always makes an A sound, paah, right? Whenever you have a hemphoel or puell, these vowels, the same way the the niku's. Make the sound of the sound they make. The verb families also make the sound that the root word makes. So all paah verbs, when you're pronouncing them, you would pronounce it with the double A, ah, ah. And that is, and and because eighty, seventy, eighty percent of all Hebrew are paah verbs, it's the largest verb family. Because seventy, eighty percent of all verbs come from the paah family. Uh, a lot of Hebrews will say that all Hebrew only makes the I sound. Um, but of course, we know that's not true because you have six other verb families. And the letters, the 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 vowels you see in these verb families. These are the vowels that you would put on all these roots when you see them. Somebody was wise enough to put the vowels for each verb family in the name of the verb. And that's where you have these different spellings, paah, nifah, PL, puah, hefah. Hufah and hip, ah, right? Four and five letter roots, right there. And so, you'll find that all of these verbs utilize the same vowels. That are present in their verb family name. So, somebody saying it only uses the A, or then my question is, well, what about the other languages? That utilize, see, the Hebrews did not have their own alphabet, the Hebrews took the Phoenician alphabet. And so, you're looking at Hebrew letters, but are you reading Hebrew, are you reading Yiddish, are you reading Spanish? Spanish in Hebrew letters.
I know there's so many similarities between Hebrew and Spanish. You know, the L, the, eh, eh, it's just a lot of sim- similarities. Even the rolling of the R in on the tongue.
You guys have heard of the the Sephardic Jews, right? Jews came out of Spain. They were, they were speaking Spanish, but they wrote Spanish with Hebrew letters. Let me say that again, the Sephardic Jews. Sepharin comes from Spain, they were Jewish people, a Jewish sect that moved to Israel. And when they came to Israel, they were speaking Spanish, but they wrote Spanish in Hebrew letters. The German Jews, the German Jews came from Germany and Poland, and they were speaking Yiddish. Which is a Germanic language, it follows the structure of Germanic language structure. But the language was written with Hebrew characters. Aramaic is a different language from Hebrew, but it uses Hebrew letters. So, if you don't know how to read Hebrew. You'll see Spanish written in Hebrew, you'll see Aramaic, you'll see Yiddish, you'll see Phoenician. You'll see Akkadian, you'll see the Canaanite languages. Of 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 a cartage, written in the Hebrew characters, you say, oh, that's Hebrew. Nah, I don't know, bruh, that is Hebrew letters, but it's not the Hebrew language. Here you have Spanish written in, written in Hebrew letters. The Hebrews did not have their own alphabet, they took the Phoenician alphabet, and the the Greeks. The Greeks also took the Phoenician alphabet. And that's why, when you compare the Greek lang, the Greek letters to the Hebrew letters, you have aleph, bay, gemel, dalit, hay. You have alpha, beta, gamma, delta, epsilon, same language, the same letters. The Greek letters come from Phoenicia, the same as the Hebrew letters. Well, that that was my five minutes of fame, y'all, that's my so much. But I just wanted to make, I just wanted to make it known that the the paah verbs is where they get that, everything makes A sound. And they're just being lazy, they don't want to, and I tell them, okay, y'all speaking that laswakwa das, or that aban ga das, za, ra, ka, za. To za, okay, find me two people on this planet. That can have a meaningful conversation in that language. If you wanna make it a language, I have no problem with it. Find me two people on this planet that can have a conversation in that language, and they can.
But it's, it's, what makes it even harder is when you have words in Hebrew. If you have two words that use the same letters. Well, how do you know which word it is?
How how do you, how do you distinguish between pronomenal prefixes and suffixes if everything is aban ga?
Right. Absolutely.
I love this class, y'all, y'all just don't know, I can talk on there, but I'm not.
You said there was a website to go to, and I missed the website. Is this the site, what is it actually called?
It's called pealim.
It's called what now?
You gotta look at my screen here, uh, you, I can, if you have a pen, I can write it down for you, I can spell it out for you.
I have, I have a pen, I was trying to.
The the spelling is P.
Okay, dot com, okay, P E A L I M dot com.
Pealim dot com, it's now. Just Hebrew, it means verbs.
Hebrew, okay, means verbs. Alright, so I have it total.
The other thing I use, this, I told you, my primary reason for learning Hebrew is to read scriptures. The other thing I use is the Blue Letter Bible.
Yeah, I'm about to start using that.
I like the Blue Letter Bible because if you click on anything, like say you wanna know a verse, any verse you wanna know, you click on it. And it gives you the Hebrew with the Masoretic text. Um, look here, you can, you can, you can say, show cancellation marks, you click on that. And it'll show you the cancellation marks, that way you can know, but the difference between a niku and a cancellation marks, right? You can look it off, and then it's, it gives you all the words, it gives you all the root words and everything. So, I like, look, look here, uh, dabar. Mosai, amar, there's another, uh, paah verb, amar, A, A and A, right? If I click on amar, I know this is a paah verb, amar, alright? So this gives you all of the information for every, uh, let me, let me show you one reason why I use this, right? I'm gonna go to a famous, Amos chapter three, right? And there's this famous passage, right, it says, can two walk together except they be agreed? Now, you see all these Hebrew accounts, fighting and fighting and fighting and fighting, and they beefing with each other, they won't come together. They will fight over the color of the sky, right? Uh, we can't, we can't unite because we gotta agree, everybody has to agree. And like, man, that's not what the scripture says, somebody translated this word to be agreed. But the word is not agreed, now how do we know? We go to Amos three and three, we blow it out, look at this. Can two walk together unless it, except to be agreed, we see here, ya'ad, right, ya'ad. Now, we click on the root for agree to see what it really means. We click on it and look at this, ya'ad. Now, this word is translated twenty-nine times in scripture. Twenty-nine times, it's it's translated in scripture, how many times is it, does it, does it, does it translate into agree?
We get to be.
One time. It it only translates to agree one time, and that one time is, guess what? Can two walk together except they be agreed? Every other time, look what it means, meet, together, assembled, appointed. Set time, patrol, appointment, gather. So, this word, this, this, this is passage, if you wanted to put this passage in its true context, it would say. How can two walk together except they be assembled, or except they be gathered? And being gathered together and agreeing with each other are two different things. You know what I'm saying? And so, we we go into the Bible, okay, well, what does agree mean? We go try, search out agree. We go see what that mirror means, oh, agree, look at this, no, nothing in Hebrew about agree. Agree is not even a Hebrew word, it's a Greek word. So these same Hebrews that say, you know, you gotta, you know, that language. Okay, well, guess what, you're using agree, and there is no word for greed in Hebrew.
So what should, what, what do you think that that we should be saying?
Can two, how can two people walk together except they be assembled, except they be gathered? Which would make more sense, if if nobody is going to gather you, then how can y'all be together? To a point, to fix, to assemble, to meet, to control. Where is, where is it to agree at?
Nothing, yes.
Nothing in the, nothing in the definition A, B, C, or D means, uh, 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 means agree, right?
Right, and nothing to do with agree, like you said.
Then here it says ya'ad, a primitive to fix upon by agreement or appointment, or see now, so so now we have. Somebody whoever wrote this, strong, do we gotta go in the, in the internet and tell you who strong was? Homosexual strong, I mean, it's our fault. Cuz he was a strong homosexual.
You tell my strong, the, the.
And and why are we, look, look, here's, that's his definition, we got Brown, Driver, Briggs, Lexicon, who are they? And why, why are they saying what they're saying, you know? So, the reason why I learned Hebrew was so that I didn't have to rely on these European, famous homosexual Europeans. Uh, definitions for things. And the the scriptures will tell you. That that's the beauty of the scriptures is. Precept upon precept, line upon line, hear a little, there a little, you know? You have to, you can find instances of things in scripture that will support other things. If you know how to look or work to learn, and and that's why it's important to know Hebrew, because. Otherwise, you're relying on somebody else's interpretation. For years and years and years, I believed that Ruth was a Moabite. And when you start reading the scriptures, hear a little, there a little, precept upon precept, you find out that Ruth was from the tribe of Benjamin. Which would make sense, because the scripture says that no Moabite would enter into the, into the congregation. Even unto the tenth generation, because of how they came out against Moses when they were fleeing out of the wilderness. So how could he say that, and then three hundred years later, he reneared on that by allowing Ruth to, a Moabite. To come into Israel, doesn't make any sense. But when you, when you look in like Numbers twenty-two, Numbers twenty-one, Deuteronomy four, Judges. Chapter seven, you start putting this piece together about the the world that Ruth lived in. You realize that Ruth was not a daughter of Moab, she was a woman of Moab. And Moab was just the place that they call the land where she lived. And you see that a lot, they'll call somebody Paul of Cyrene, Ruth of Moab, right? Uriah the Hittite. Why would David marry Bathsheba if Bathsheba was married to Uriah, and Uriah was a Hittite? Well, the Hittites had long been destroyed, so why do they call Uriah Hittite? They they called him a Hittite because he lived in the land that was once inhabited by the Hittites. So, because that was where he pertained, Yokona from Texas, Uriah the Hittite. So Ruth was called a woman of Moab, not because she descended from Moab. But because she descended from the land that was once inhabited by Moab. And the Bible tells you in Numbers, that this land of Moab was taken from Moab. By Bashan of the Amorites, and they even called it the land of Moab. So this is, like I said, those are nuances in the scripture that you don't get if you don't know how to read the language. And all this time, I'm thinking Ruth was a Moabite, because I hear they married women of Moab. Yeah, they married women of Moab, not daughters of Moab.
Can I, can I ask about one more scripture?
Yes.
The scripture where it says that a woman shall not wear that, that which pertained unto a man.
So, yeah, so y'all ain't supposed to wear pants.
Right.
That's true.
Yeah, I I'll tell you, look, is that the case? Nobody was wearing pa- pants. Pants were invented in France. In like the seventeen, yeah, the sixteen or seventeen hundreds, because they went to war with, I think it was Italy, Italy or Portugal. And they had to fight in the swamps, and the people were were dying of dysentery and disease. Because they wore skirts. And the, the, the peasants. The peasants that were conscripted to fight for France, they came up with a way of protecting their underbelies. By making their dresses, sewing their, the skirts or the dresses together. To protect themselves from the the swamp and the snakes and everything, and that's what the word panty, panties, right? Apatalonis, right, long panties, that's where it comes from. And they still wore their dresses, but they wore long panties under their dresses. To keep their legs from getting attacked by slugs and leeches and mosquitoes and water moccasins. And that's how the French lived over the Portuguese. It has nothing to do with, now, now, watch this, I I don't know what verse that is, that where they say that, right?
Deuteronomy twenty-eight?
Pretends, yeah, tell me what it is, you know it.
And it's twenty-eight, um.
Okay, look, a woman shall not, this is Deuteronomy twenty-five, twenty-two and five, now watch this. A a woman shall not wear that which pertains unto a man, what is the Hebrew word for man? Ish, is everybody clear, the Hebrew word for man is Ish. Alright, let's look at this, a woman shall not wear that which pertains unto a man. Why is it saying Gibor and not Ish, what is Gibor, or Gebir? Watch this, Gebir. It means what, man or a mighty man, a strong man. Emphasizing what, strength or ability to fight. So, women are not supposed to go to war. Why are women not supposed to go to war? Women were the greatest natural resource of any nation of people. If you kid all the men, you would marry all the women to bring your nation through the, the, the womb of the, of your enemy. Women were valuable, or they were, they were so highly valued. That they did not want their women going to war, because that was how you maintain your nation. This is one of the things that we, we kind of told the kingdom, and one time about. Them allowing the people to go into IDF, the children to go into the, the military, the Israeli military. Why are we allowing our people to go into the military, the girls at least? When you're not supposed to let your girls go into fight, into battle, Deuteronomy is the law, isn't it, it's Torah? So, a woman is not supposed to wear that which pertains unto a mighty man, well, what pertains to a mighty man? A shield, a sword, a helmet, a buckler, a chariot? A woman is not supposed to wear that which pertains unto a mighty man. So why are we allowing our sisters, our daughters to go into the military? Um, so, but of course, you talk to a Hebrew who tells you that you can't wear pants, then they don't wanna hear this. Well, that, that, that's, that's not, that's not even real Hebrew, ah, that's not even real Hebrew. So, yeah, that, that's, that's a, that's where that comes from, Gibor, right, it means mighty man. A man of va- a valiant man of war, or warrior. And then, then it says, it says generally every man, why? Because every man twenty years older, older, was supposed to be conscripted into the Israeli, into the Israelite army. Any man who could hold a sword was supposed to be conscripted into the Israelite army for the revenge of the people. So every man at one time was, was a soldier. But women were not allowed to wear, women were not allowed to be conscripted into war, it's basically what it's saying. I don't know where they came up with the whole, don't wear pants, I know where they came up with it from, it's a European Christianity thing. See, you got, the problem is, a lot of these Hebrew Israelite leaders were the same people who were leading us in these churches. And when they crossed over from being Christian to being Hebrew, the residue of that crap came in with them. And that's why they don't want you wearing pants, because the European Christian Mormons and other Seventh Day Adventists and Pentecostal. They don't want you wearing pants if you're a woman, and that comes from European Christianity and not from the Israelite scripture. And 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 that's the power of etymology, when you study the history and origin of language and how it changes over time. You start to see some things that only make sense to you if, when you're, when you're able to see those things. There's no point in me trying to explain all this to somebody who is in the blind camp world, cause they could never receive it.
Right, and the other thing is, it, through the European translations. Um, I wanna say, it's, it's three words that they, they have translated to man. They translated Adam to be the word. They translated Gibor to be the word M A N, and of course, they translated Ish. To be the word M A N, and they use it interchangeably. So you don't know when you're, when you're reading the English and you see the word man. It, now that you know, they, that man could be Adam, man could be Gibor, man could be Ish. You don't know which one they using, cause they just.
You see here where it says, um, he, he translate, he, he, uh, he created all of these things. Right, let me see where I can find it, let's see, maybe it's in the, chapter one. It says here that he made all of these things after their kind, right? Look at this, um. Um, yeah, verse, Genesis one twenty-one, and Yah created great wells, and every living creature that moves it, which to the waters. Above, brought forth dwindling after their kind, and every wing foul after his kind, and God saw it was good. And God said, let them, bless them, let them be fruit and multiply, said Etzerah twenty-four. Bring forth every living creature after his kind, and every beast of the earth after his kind, and it was so, right? Then he goes on, may all the beasts after his kind, cattle after his kind. Creep upon earth after his kind, and God saw that it was good, and God said, let us make man our image after like this. And let us, let us give dominion over these things, so God created man in his own image. In the image of God created he him, right here, male and female created he them. And God said, and God blessed them, right, so Adam. Adam is man, but it is man after every kind. Every creature in the creations was given the authority to regenerate after its time. So cattle kind, creeping sin crime, foul kind, mankind. So Adam is not man, Adam is the Adamic species, or man as a species. Male and female is Adam. It is, Adam means after his kind, that's all it means, after his kind.
My kind. And so they, they, they generalize that down to just one woman and one man.
Yeah. Yeah, they generalize that down to one man and one woman. It it it's not the case, it doesn't make sense, how can, how can a man be Ish, Gibor, and Adam? What is, there's gotta be a discrepancy there. There's gotta be something that causes the change, so you have Ish and Ishar, which is male and female. Male and female, that's Ish and Ishar, let's, let's, let's prove it real quick, Genesis, uh, was it one twenty-six? Genesis one twenty-six. Uh, maybe it's one twenty-seven. Uh, I keep doing that. We're, we're finished with today, guys, uh, there you go, one twenty-seven, so. Male and female in his own image, after his image, him, male and female, right? Oh, look at this, Zakar and Nikiba, right, male and female. Male and female or man and woman. Zakar, there, Zakar Unikiba, Zakar Unikiba, male and female. Uh, any more questions, we, we can go on, but I'm, I'm, I, the class is well spread.
Well, you know, I can go on with this. So, I'mma, I'mma stop.
Okay, well, um, let's, let's, let's bring it to an end right here, I'm gonna go into Numbers, chapter ten. And we'll lower the ark, and then we'll call it a, we'll call it a wrap, okay? It says, um, and when it came to, and when it rested, the ark, when it rested. Moses said, return, oh Yah, unto the many thousands of Israel, this is. Shavu. I'm sorry, Shuva, Shuva, Yahua. We have Reeve, Vokes.
Revote.
Revote. Alfe, Al. Fe, Alfe, Israel. Reva vote, no, 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 so they, they say Reva vote, and here's why they say Reva vote, you have the Re. See the, uh, that. And then remember the, the. The Shuva can make the little superscript E sound, Reeve and Vokes, Reeve and Vokes. Alfe, Israel, Shuva, Yahua, Reeva, Alfe, Israel.
Israel.
Hallelujah.
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 Hallelujah.